Good evening and welcome to a special meeting of the North Hampton School Committee. It's Wednesday, September 26, 2018. I'm Mayor David Narco. It's the chair. And we'll begin by asking the clerk to call the role of the school committee.
Mayor David Narco?
Present.
Ms. Bernam, Ms. Rebecca Musansky?
Present.
Laura Fallon?
Present.
Ms. Lynn Henske?
Present.
Marla Cottler?
Mr. Donnie Meyer?
Present.
Mr. Howard Moore?
Ms. Susan Ball?
Present.
Mr. Ezra Howey?
Present.
We have a quorum.
We have one.
Okay. Is there anyone who wishes to speak in public comment? Okay. Sam Weng. So, there's no one who wishes to speak in public comment, so we'll go on to announcements. Are there any announcements from the school committee? Ms. Fallon?
We've all been invited to join Holyoke Springfield, Brockton, and Worcester Public Schools for a community forum. It's called "A Tale of Four Cities: An Evening of Advocacy and Coalition Building Around Chapter Seventy Funding Issues." It's Tuesday, October 9th, 5:30 till 7:00 p.m. at Holyoke High Dean Campus in the cafeteria. They're encouraging all elected officials, district leaders, parents, and members of the community to attend, participate in the public commentary, and listen to the next action steps. Senator, I'm sorry, State Representative Vega will be speaking, and there will be an overview of the issues by the MASs and MASC, and then a focus on organizing and communication planning. So, I would urge anyone who's available to go back and forward the information to.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Okay.
Any other announcements? The school committee? Okay. So, we have a consent agenda this evening that includes the approval of minutes of September 13th, and actually, July 12th minutes were not available at press time, so those are not going to be on the consent agenda. And then two field trip requests. Jackson Street School, 5th grade, going to Nature's Classroom in Beckett, Massachusetts, October 9th through the 12th. And the Bridge Street School, 5th grade, going to Nature's Classroom in Charlton, Mass., November 13th through the 16th. Is there any items that people wish to?
I would move to approve the consent agenda with the exception, Emily, I'd like to pull the September 13th school committee minutes.
Okay. Did you have a?
I was going to say the same thing.
Perfect. Would you second?
I'll second.
Okay, great. So, this would be a vote just on the consent agenda, effectively on the two field trip requests that are on the consent agenda. Yes, Ms. Ross?
I'm fine with that, but can I make a comment?
Sure.
I got through half of the meeting notes, and I just wanted, so I don't have to say it next meeting, can I offer a slight modification now so that?
Well, I think we're going to get right to the minutes after we're voting on the consent agenda, then we'll talk about the minutes.
Thanks, got it, got it. That's fine, thank you.
Because she's pulling it off the agenda.
Got it.
So, all those in favor of the consent agenda, which is the two Nature's Classroom trips, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? So, now we come to the question of the September 13 minutes. Can I, I guess I would first defer to the person who wanted them pulled off, and then I'll go to other concerned.
So, it wasn't a specific question I had, so much as a general. Last month, we approved the updated policy, BEDG, on minutes, and one of the notes that we added at the end was how specific comments under discussion should only be included in the minutes as a result of a vote of the committee. And so, I was hoping that, I felt that these were perhaps overly detailed, which I appreciate, but I wonder that we should just be writing the actions taken, particularly the public comment period summaries and summaries of discussions or, because I feel like when we choose what to put in and which comments to include, that we're somewhat editing it. I would rather we just stick to the actions that were taken.
Okay. Ms. Ross?
I had a somewhat different comment, but it was to add something. But I think it is an action, and I will admit, I did not, the reason I, one of the reasons I'm in favor of taking these off and postponing them no matter what, is I haven't had a chance to read it all. So, I did get to part of it, and where we talked about the budget to fund the math study, my memory is that we expect there to be a request for proposal coming back to us in October, and I think that should probably be reflected here, because that is an action of some sort.
Okay. Ms. Musansky, did you have a question?
I was also just going to ask if we could push off the vote till next month because, or next meeting, because I haven't had, I didn't have a chance to read them.
Okay.
Since they came out so late, which I completely understand. Some could look at it as they came out so fast.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So, then, could I then just have a motion to postpone consideration of these until a future meeting?
Move to postpone consideration of the September 13th minutes until our next meeting?
Yeah. Which I know, a second.
October 11th.
October 11th, yeah. I know we have a meeting, but it's at a retreat, so I didn't want to postpone them to that. So, October 11th, okay.
Second.
Seconded, okay. Well, any other discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, that, that action is postponed until our next regular meeting. Next, we have a vote to accept the gift from the Jackson Street PTO for the aforementioned Nature's Classroom field trip. And I don't know, Principal Agnew is here. If you want to mention, discuss it, it's $1,163.60 from PTO to fund, yeah.
So, this is the effort that we make, and all the schools do, to leave no child behind in going to Nature's Classroom. So, the PTO is committed always to making up any shortfall. And also, this reflects some of the fundraising that the 4th grade families did to make sure that their kids this year could go to Nature's Classroom. So, it's a combination of that, the fundraising and the PTO.
Okay.
Make him, I move to accept the gift in the amount of $1,163.66 from the Jackson Street PTO to fund bus transportation.
Second.
Second, okay. Any other questions or discussion about this gift? Okay. All those in favor of approving the acceptance of the gift, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? The gift is gratefully accepted.
Pass the word. Thank you.
Thank you. And actually, you may not want to leave. The next item is another gift from the Jackson Street PTO. This is a $15,000 gift for supply shortfall.
This, there's a history to this. It actually goes back to 2003, when we had major budget cuts in the North Hampton schools that did eliminate assistant principals at the elementary school, eliminated school librarians at the elementary school, eliminated aides on the recess and launch aides. It was a kind of a Saturday night massacre kind of event. And over the years, the PTO has tried to make up for, they were committed at the time and continue to be, to try to make up for the shortfall that we suffered then, and we continue to have in terms of the kinds of needs that teachers have, that they can actually donate to, rather than fund any positions, which can't happen that way. So, because of the ways that we need to identify funds that come into our schools now officially, we, I talked to the PTO, and I said, "We need to do this officially to make sure that we are very transparent about how funding happens in our school." And therefore, they were able to commit a certain amount of money that they'd like to support the teachers in all the ways that they can't fund things in their classrooms. And there've been so many studies about how many teachers fund their classrooms to, I think, the average, when we did a survey in this district, it was about $1,000 a year that teachers spend of their own. So, again, the PTO decided that they really wanted to step up and be very public about that they wanted to support the teachers.
Move to accept the gifting amount of $15,000 from Jackson Street PTO to fund supplies.
Second. Is there any comments or questions or?
Only to say that it's remarkable what our PTOs do throughout the district in this evening in regards to Jackson Street School and the generosity, recognizing the need of teachers to help students in the classroom, I think is just, it's a testament to the wonderful parents that we have here in North Hampton that are so willing to do so much to support their children in the classroom. So, thank you very much.
Well, I think that we really do think that we couldn't do it without them at this point, and we really couldn't. So, and it's really important. So, thank you, and I will pass that along as well.
Appreciate that. Okay. So, all those in favor of accepting the gift, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, I believe that concludes the Jackson Street gift portion of the agenda, so thank you very much.
Thank you for holding another meeting to.
No, I know that the.
To address this and.
Yeah, one of the, the October 9th, obviously, departure was going to be a problem since our meeting was October 11th.
Yeah, that would be a little, so, I appreciate being able to go.
Problem.
All right, thanks a lot.
Okay. So, the next item on the agenda is a report from the Rules and Policy Subcommittee, and this is on second readings on various policies. So, I'll turn it over to Ms. Fallon.
Yes, this is a second reading, and we'll be voting on policy KE revised, public complaints. It's part of a effort to consolidate the three policies, well, four policies that we had, and update them. And so, I know that we have read the entire policy, and that you all have it, and we have discussed it, but I didn't know if there was any more discussion before we voted on public complaints revised.
Any other further comments from the last meeting? Okay. It looks to be any, so, if we have a motion on that, we can.
Move to approve policy KE, public complaints revised.
Second.
Okay. This has been a motion made and seconded. Any further discussion? All those in favor of approving the policy, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay, so that policy is approved on second reading.
Do we need to vote to eliminate these policies individually, or can they be taken as a group?
I would, I would suspect that the committee would entertain them as a group.
Okay. So, this would be a second reading and vote to eliminate policies KEB, public complaints about school personnel, KEBR, public complaints about school personnel, and KEC, public complaints about the curriculum or instructional materials, as they've all been integrated into the new policy KE that you just voted to approve.
Is there a second? Okay. Are there any complaints about this motion?
I have, I have no complaint, but I just have a question.
Sure.
To understand how it works. So, these, I understand going through the policies, and there's old dates on them. Is the wording on these things that MASC is suggesting, or are ours different from other districts?
So, MASC gave us guidance to consolidate and update these policies, and they had suggested wording, and because it's Mr. Moore and Ms. Henske and myself, we opted to use our own wording. So, ours is not identical to the MASC recommendations.
But that's helpful, so, but they're telling us to get rid of those three.
Yeah, they were telling us to consolidate.
The flavor of what the other. Okay, thanks. That's what I figured I just.
All right. So, motion's been made and seconded. Any other discussion? Okay. So, all those in favor of elimination of the three now outmoded policies, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? Okay. So, that elimination is approved on second reading. Next, we have a discussion and vote on selecting a delegate to represent the school committee at the MASC conference in Hyannis, November 7th through the 10th, 2018, and then whether or not to give guidance to said delegate on the resolutions that are being put before the delegates. So, yes, Ms. Musansky?
I'd like to nominate Ms. Fallon as our delegate.
Okay. Excellent.
Second.
Okay. You were planning to attend, I.
Yeah. I just turned once ago.
Excellent.
She is now.
So, there's been a motion made and seconded to nominate Ms. Fallon to be our delegate. Is there anyone else, any other nominations that? Okay. So, all those in favor then of approving Ms. Fallon to be our delegate, to actually vote on our behalf at the conference, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Any abstentions? And then, I guess, now that you're the delegate, do you want to now seek guidance on these policies? And I think, it says restrictions attached, but I think it meant resolutions attached. I think the copies of the 13 resolutions were attached, but if you want to put restrictions on Ms. Fallon, that may not be a bad idea.
So, I would like to get just a little input. I don't want to drag out what should be a fairly short meeting, but just to be, so I was a part of the resolutions committee, and so, I've already amended some of the original resolutions, and then had to vote on them again at the MASC Board of Directors meeting for Division Five, and once again fought to amend some of them. But now that I'm a delegate representing our districts, I would like to have some feedback. Obviously, there's no way of knowing what happens on the floor of the Assembly. You've got hundreds of people all jumping up to give amendments, but just to get a general feel for some of them. And some of these, while they seem sort of, they don't seem necessary for Massachusetts, for example, Resolution One, rejecting the arming of educators, they actually are really important when we go to the National School Board Association Conference to be on the record as saying, "We oppose this," so that then they can argue for things at the federal level. Sorry, John.
I'm waiting, I'm not recognized.
Okay. Am I saying something wrong? And so, so that, just to give you that perspective on it, so, does anyone have feedback on Resolution One that I should, I'm assuming?
Yes. If you recall, I attempted to organize this somewhat like a consent agenda by asking people if they had specific resolutions that they had objections to that might be helpful. So, I did receive two specific requests. One was for, they're both from Ms. Burnham. One was for discussion on Resolution Eight, and the concern that she brings up is whether there is a moral concern about students, about schools accepting money from wagering as part of their funding stream. And then, the other one was number nine. She wanted to know about how the changes would affect our special education team, our budget, and special ed services in the district.
And those were the two resolutions that I actually fought or argued against and made some changes to at the, at the resolutions meeting. So, I mean, do you only want to address the ones there's questions on, or should we just get a quick sense?
I think the goal of it was to not.
To not go through all of them?
Discuss them all, but to see if any, any jumped out at members that they had.
Okay. So, the sports wagering initially was supporting sports wagering, and like, that was the statement. And the amendment I made was to say that it was resolved that should the General Court enact legislation to legalize wagering on sporting events, the General Court shall commit a portion of the revenues generated from sports wagering to public education. For exactly that reason, I worried that coming out in favor of sports wagering seemed a little strange, and I struggled with it. I understand that we need revenue, but preying on some of our most vulnerable populations, I feel like in the, just to get revenue, I feel like in the long run, could end up costing us money. And so, I opposed encouraging the General Court to legalize it, but I did not stand firm against if they, to say, if they do, that we should then ask for a portion to be dedicated to schools.
So, is Ms. Burnham concerned that that was like, that it was a moral position to not take the money?
Yeah, should we have no stance?
I'd like to understand more about money coming to schools from gambling, AKA sports wagering, and how we feel about this as a school committee.
Okay. Yes.
I have a question.
Sure.
Do we currently get funded through lottery?
Yes. Yeah. Lottery, soon casinos will be generating revenue.
This is a much bigger issue.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yes, I just didn't want to go in with my own opinion and argue what I don't know how the rest of the committee feels about taking a stand one way or another, or whether you think we shouldn't even be taking a stance on it.
I think the horse is out of the barn in terms of, you know, games of chance.
And is this something we see coming down the pike? Is that why we're?
There's a huge discussion about it, because it's now.
Because there's a Supreme Court decision.
Supreme Court decision. So, some states are rushing forward on it.
But in Massachusetts, have we begun to move on it?
Nothing.
Our legislature.
Not yet. I think they're waiting probably till after the election.
Right.
But it does open the door to do it, and, you know, it's, it's, you know, it's, it's not that there's not sports wagering going on now.
Right.
It's just it's not being done above the table and being taxed, and, you know, so there's, there's an argument to be made about it, whether legalizing it would root out corruption and also generate revenue, so, so anyway.
Has mask, did mask take a stance on, do we know, on the casinos before they were legalized, or on marijuana before it was legalized? The tax revenue generated by marijuana or the other?
It's challenging, yeah. I mean, generally organized labor was in favor of the casinos, because it was jobs and trade, and so, I don't, I don't recall there being any opposition specifically.
Or a mask resolution.
Yeah, I don't remember, I don't remember that, but I was opposed, but, you know. So.
So, it's, how does the committee in general thinks that this is sort of an inevitability, and that we should?
Because all the resolution is saying is that like, if it's legalized.
So, right now, what it's saying is that if it's legalized, we should get a portion of it. And so, the arguments in the room were that we shouldn't be taking a stance at all, that we shouldn't be saying that we're in favor of it, that if it does indeed pass, that then's when we, that is when we stand up and say, "Hey, we'd like a portion of the proceeds." And then, the other side was arguing pretty strongly that we should say, that urge them to legalize it. And so, this was sort of the compromise position, but I'm assuming that there will be changes made on the floor of the Assembly?
Yeah.
And so, I just didn't know, I didn't, I didn't know how to vote.
So, for the people that are here, Ms. Burnham's not here, is there any strong sense that we should be opposed to this, or encourage our delegate not to?
I mean, I recognize, I recognize that things can change on the floor very quickly, so you just need one amendment, and the whole tone changes. I feel comfortable with this resolution as it's stated. It feels like maybe it's unnecessary. I don't know if there's precedent for this or not, but if there, you know, maybe it makes sense to say, it doesn't seem to be saying that we're for sports wagering, just that if there's sports wagering and it generates revenue, we, schools should have a piece of it, because we're so badly unfunded. But if that changes to.
To what the initial resolution was.
To saying like, we encourage or urge, then I, then I would have a problem, more of a problem with that, I guess. I'd want to look into it more, but it's strange to make a resolution.
I agree. As it is, I'm fine with it. Okay.
And then, the other one was Resolution Nine, access to information for parents and students who are clients of special education. I fought pretty hard against this, against this. I did speak with people from our special education department. The current law is that, that each person conducting an assessment shall summarize and writing the procedures employed, the results, et cetera, but that summaries of assessments shall be completed prior to the discussion by the team and upon request. Right now, the law is only upon request do those assessment results get mailed to families, and then it says that it shall be made available to the parents at least two days in advance of the team discussion. And so, what they're proposing is making this mandatory, that those results of those, the assessments are always sent either by email or mail, and that they are sent out five days in advance, and they were unwilling to, I initially passed an amendment, and then it got overthrown. They were also unwilling to waiver on the, in the family's preferred language whenever possible. They took out the whenever possible language. So, I just feel like this is, this is another unfunded mandate that's going to cost our district money. I understand the group that was proposing this was a kind of a informal coalition of urban districts that are very concerned that students aren't getting, their parents are not getting the information they need in time to understand it and prepare for the IEP meetings, but I do worry about the results it would have, the impact it would have on our district.
But it's a resolution requesting that DESI change regulations.
Yeah, yeah, that they're asking to change the law.
State law.
State law. Okay.
Which then, I assume direct DESI can do it, not only give DESI the flexibility to refine it.
Do you have thoughts on this?
Yes, I'm strongly opposed as a former special education director. One of the parts of our procedure was always to ask the parent if they wanted to receive the evaluations prior to the team meeting, and if they said yes, we did, if they said no, we didn't. There were many times when parents said no, especially since this is a cyclical process that happens every three years. Parents, I think, get familiar with interpreting these results as they're presented at team meetings, and so, they don't always want to have them, or don't always require them before the meeting. I would say to the point that this may have been brought forward from a number of districts that have difficulties with compliance, that there are a number of mechanisms that are available for the protection of individuals with disabilities with respect to this right now. If it is a widespread district, you know, complete district failure to provide assessments when requested by parents, there's always the Office for Civil Rights, which can investigate claims that, that civil rights are being denied. If it's a problem that is somewhat less pervasive, there's the PQA system through the Massachusetts Department of Education, which will also investigate complaints if districts aren't doing what is needed. So, if there are people who want to receive assessments that aren't receiving assessments, I think there are remedies available now. It seems like this is a resolution that would require districts to also provide assessments to parents who don't necessarily want to have them. So, I would be opposed to it. And it will, it will, it'll affect operations. It's more postage, it's more, I mean, one of the things that was done through that negotiation with parents about whether or not they wanted to receive the assessments prior to the meeting is it helped us with scheduling. So, we could get more meetings in, we could get students with eligibility terminations more quickly, because sometimes we knew that we had an extra day or two to finish assessments prior to the meeting. If under this, we're sending them out five days in advance, what it means is that we're probably not going to be scheduling as many meetings.
Ms. Ross?
I agree with everything that's been said, especially the unfunded mandate part, but I do have one other thing to add, and before I add that, I don't know if it's the current law, but I would think that parent, that we would want to be sure what you said actually happens. Parents are offered, in their language if possible, a report, and so, that is the law. Thank you. The other thing that struck me about this is requiring really personal information to be mailed or emailed is something, I'm the one that keeps getting worried about emails getting stolen, right? But I'm going to bring it up again, because in August, if people read this, the ACT, kind of the, similar to the SAT, but a different test, was, was, I don't know if they were found or accused of selling special ed reports on children or accommodations to colleges. So, these things do get out there, and I think if, I could imagine if parents did not ask for it to be mailed or emailed, and it was sent, I think it's raining.
Yeah.
Would the school be held responsible for, for this very personal information in the IEP or the 504 to get in the wrong hands? So, I think there's a risk there, too.
So, did you oppose this in its final form without being?
But I, there were too many votes in favor.
Okay.
I'm with you. I just do think it is complicated, and I understand what you're saying. I do think that sometimes parents don't understand how important those reports are, and they say, "No, no, it's okay." And that if it wasn't a funding issue, I think we would want to encourage parents to receive those reports and read them, because they're so essential to understanding what's going on with their child. So, I get the funding, and I get the bureaucracy and the scheduling. I think we could maybe be better at scheduling, but I get why this came up, and I, and I'm not as strongly opposed to it, but I, I'm with you on it, but I do think it's a little bit more complicated, so.
And that was one of my, oh, I'm sorry. I was going to say, that was the other point, though, that I made during that meeting, was that just getting this, like, there are plenty of people who, in their native language and, you know, don't understand technical jargon, and so, to me, it would have been more important to have an interpreter speaking. And so, to me, it would have been more important to have an interpreter speaking their native language in the actual IEP meeting, explaining the assessment results, than having those results sent to them two or five days in advance, because I feel like maybe we're focusing on the wrong thing. And so, I don't know whether it would be an advocacy issue, or if it's interpretation, but I think that there could be something else done to end up with a better end result.
Mr. Meyer?
I just had a question about current practice, because the first is that is the CPAC and the school district doing an adequate job in terms of informing parents of their rights under the... You know, under IDEA. And the second is, what is our current practice in terms of making reports available? Because just noticing that the federal regulations allow school districts up to forty-five days. I'm hoping that we don't take forty-five days to turn around a request, but I would assume that that's one of the impetuses, is that districts can place this at a very low priority and delay meetings, or say, "Oh, well, you got it, you..." It'll be a month later. I just wondered what the current... Answer both questions in terms of current practice.
So, with respect to provision of assessments to parents in their preferred language, that is one of the areas that's reviewed in the Coordinated Program Review. The district was found to be implementing that requirement. With respect to timelines, that also is a part of the Coordinated Program Review. There were some findings for the district on timelines. It was not timelines based on delay of turning around paperwork to parents to seek consent. It was the backlog of students in the queue waiting for assessments and not sufficient evaluators, which is a common kind of finding, not acceptable, common. I did want to throw out, if I may, while I have the floor, that the comment about having assessments interpreted in... At the team meeting was also a part of the practice that I observed when I was a special ed director, that I thought parents found maybe more helpful, because a lot of parents said, "I don't really need the report, but if there's something surprising in it, I'd like you to go over it with me and help me understand it before the team meeting." And that was something that we definitely provided as a service for parents. I understand maybe that doesn't happen everywhere, but I think that was more of a benefit to a lot of parents and just getting, you know, reports in the mail that they might have difficulty understanding.
Okay. So, does that give you a sense of the committee? Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Is there any other resolutions that people took issues with, or thought were problematic?
I'm curious about what your thoughts are about the... I don't remember the number, abolishing the Department of Education?
What mine are?
Three.
Elimination. You know, I feel like that was reactive and very time-specific, to be honest.
Okay, great.
I think that it was just the timing of it, but I think that it was just when they talked about it, they said they would like to work with the federal delegation to reject any notion. So, I think that's another issue that they will just... I think various states are working together to make sure that if it becomes an issue, that they have... They're on the record.
Thank you.
Okay, so does that... So, we've elected our delegate, and we've given our delegate guidance for the November conference. Any other questions or updates from rules and policy? Yes.
Well, I was just going to say, I think it's interesting what I learned by attending last year, and I'm sorry, I can't go this year, is that, you know, we as a school committee could propose a resolution, just something to keep in mind for the future, that we all just have to... Framingham looks like they're the most vocal resolution, but anyway, something to keep in mind for the future, that if we had something we held strongly about, we could move that process along.
And that's one of the things that they're voting on, is to change that deadline to June 1st and July 1st, so we'll have to just remember.
Okay. Excellent. So, the next item on the agenda is the...
Geez.
Is the update on subcommittee assignments. As you know, at our last meeting, due to the change in our rules and our subcommittee policies, we changed our standing subcommittees to be the Budget and Property, Rules and Policy, and Superintendent Evaluation, and obviously, the Curriculum Committee was removed as a committee, as a standing subcommittee. The goal of this was to... There's three standing subcommittees, and there's nine members, and so to have a member on each... You know, each member having an opportunity to serve on one standing committee, that's sort of how the math works out. I did reach out to the impacted members to get their input on their sort of preferences. Basically, there were two members who were left without any committee, not serving on any committee. That was Ms. Voss and Ms. Burnham. Mr. Kaufman was already on two committees, so he was not affected, but I did survey Mr. Kaufman in terms of what his preferences were in a perfect world. And then the other members that were on two standing committees were Mr. Zahouski and Ms. Hennessy. I also spoke with them to understand, because obviously, their stepping off a committee would facilitate a space for one of the two displaced members to serve. So, all that, and obviously trying to do the minimum amount of disruption, I've put together a memo which just updates the committees. I'll just basically read the changes, which the only real changes are to the standing subcommittees. There are no changes to any of the other assignments, the, you know, the assignments to the Legislative Liaison, the Parliamentary, and the PTO, like, none of those changed. It really was just those three standing committees. So, for Budget and Property, the three members that I am appointing to that committee are Ms. Musansky, Mr. Meyer, and Ms. Voss to Budget and Property. Rules and Policy actually remains unchanged, Ms. Fallon, Ms. Hennessy, and Ms. Moore. And then Superintendent Evaluation, the only change there is that Ms. Burnham replaces Ms. Hennessy, who's stepping off of Superintendent Evaluation. And obviously, Mr. Zahouski would be taking... Would be stepping off of Budget and Property to make way for Ms. Voss. So, that then aligns us. We have three... You know, each of the members are on at least one of the standing committees, and then again, all of the other assignments remain the same. So, I did the sort of the update on the memo, and I'll just send it around, and it'll be online, and we'll... I'll have all the other things we'll do. So.
Is this your way of getting out of being chair?
I've been deferring to you for important last few months, so best of luck.
So, that's the... Those are the updated assignments. The next order of... Well, there is no new business tonight. We do have a Rules and Policy Subcommittee Meeting scheduled for Thursday, October 4th, at 3:30 PM in the Superintendent's Office. Our next regular school committee meeting is October 11th, 2018, here at 7:15 in JFK Library Room. And then we have a... Should say School Committee Retreat. Yeah, it shouldn't say alt. It's just a School Committee Retreat Meeting on October 25th, 2018, from 6:00 to 9:00 PM, and the location is still to be determined. We'll get that out, obviously, in plenty of time for the posting.
I have the same question. Do we have a Student Advisory Committee?
Advisory Committee, which starts not at 6:00?
What time is it?
Yes, I think so. 6:45?
6:45.
6:45.
So, will we... Should we try to reschedule that to a different meeting, or...
No, I think they're just saying that we should also have post... Or listed as future business, a Student Advisory Meeting to immediately precede the school committee meeting on October 11th.
Okay.
Is that what that SAC is? Is this a school committee meeting SAC?
Great, so that... We'll have to update that in the actual posting. This is obviously just for informational purposes, but thank you for pointing that out. So, we do have a... We do have a need to have an executive session, and so I will ask the Chair to make a motion regarding the executive session that's on the agenda.
As the Vice Chair, I will make a motion to enter into executive session in the JFK Library under Massachusetts General Open Meeting for the Approval of Executive Session Minutes, July 11, 2016, July 12, 2016, August 19, 2016, September 8, 2016, September 15, 2016, September 28, 2016, October 3, 2016, October 13, 2016, November 9, 2016, November 10, 2016, November 28, 2016, December 8, 2016, December 21, 2016, January 4, 2017, February 8, 2017, June 8, 2017, July 13, 2017, August 10, 2017, October 12, 2017, November 9, 2017, January 11, 2018, February 8, 2018, March 8, 2018, May 10, 2018, in Chapter 38, Section 21A 3, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining NACE, whereas an open session would have a detrimental effect on the school committee's negotiating position.
Okay. So, that's a motion. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
Okay. This requires a roll call vote, so I'll ask the clerk to call the roll.
Senator Martin?
Yes.
Ms. Musansky?
Yes.
Ms. Laura Fallon?
Yes.
And Sam Hennessy?
Yes.
Mr. Don Meyer?
Yes.
Ms. Susan Voss?
Yes.
Mr. Edward Soehl?
Yes.
So, the committee has voted to go into the executive session. I need to announce to the public that we will now move to executive session, because to have these discussions in an open session detrimental to the bargaining position of the school committee. I also need to announce that we will adjourn directly from executive session and not return to open session. So, we will now move into executive session.